The School Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Mr. Prochaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
We have with us tonight students from Roosevelt Middle School, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. First, they'll introduce themselves. You want to stop at the microphone and introduce yourself? Right here.
Hi, my name's Deanna Moore from Roosevelt Middle School, and these are my friends from Roosevelt. Nice.
My name is Nathan Virgil, 8th grade, Student Council.
Hi, my name is Chase Holman. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm in Student Council.
I'm Clara Sikowski. I'm also in 7th grade, and I'm in Student Council, so.
I'm Ella Palmer. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm part of Kiwanis Builders Club.
I'm Brandy Donovan. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm part of Kiwanis Builders Club.
I'm Madeline Malone. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm part of Kiwanis Builders Club.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are ready.
I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved in second to move the board. I'm sorry. You guys have me all flushed. It has been moved in second to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 9th, 2018, as submitted.
I second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 9th, 2018, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, we will have an overview of the proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Kelleher.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Rangin. Tonight, we are asking you to amend the budget for the current fiscal year, 1718 school year. The reason we are asking to do this is we've had a change or increase in expenditures in one of the four functional areas. The total budget for the district is not changing. It's just when we budgeted, we made estimates in those four different areas, and as things develop, for example, as we buy furniture for part of the senior project, we had that in the 4,000s, it actually gets quoted in 2,600s. So it's a reclassification of some of our estimates. It does not change the tax rate at all, and I think we've done this for several years. The reason we're asking you to do that is if we don't do it, we are in violation of the law and get an audit right up on it. So that's the reason we want to have you approve of the change tonight.
Great.
Any questions on that?
We do this almost every year.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anyone wishing to comment on this?
I move the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2017-2018 as published.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2017-2018 as published. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. And we will go on to the next overview of the facility addition project of the pool. So.
Overview.
Overview. Who's going to do that? Okay.
I'm Rochelle Hines with FRK. Thanks for letting me give you kind of a brief overview here tonight. So just briefly, from the last meeting that you guys have had, so original bids were taken March 15th, 2018. They were high on the project. On March 20th, 2018, you guys decided, the district decided to reject those bids and authorized us to move forward with making some value engineering changes and rebid that project. With the district and us, we went through various value engineering items, really striving and maintaining the size and function of the pool was the main importance of that, and we were able to do that even with those value engineering items. New bids were taken on May 3rd, 2018, and came in 519,000 under the original bid.
And Board members, I wanted to take just a minute and remind you that it was six years ago this month that there was a study done by Burbach Aquatics pointing out the deficiencies of the pool at that time, and I just wanted to remind you of a few of them. Remember the pool vessels losing thousands of gallons of water a week? The interior pool finish at that time was recommended to be removed and replaced due to delaminating issues of the interior finishing. Remember the existing pool diving hoppers do not meet the competitive diving standards? The pool decking was recommended to be removed to provide positive drainage away from the pool as swimmers got out of the pool, and the recirculating pool water system at that time was also going to be recommended to be replaced. And finally, remember the existing space cannot host regional events. At that time, six years ago, the study explained the cost of a short-term repair, five years, was estimated at over $1.5 million. Maintenance department, the custodial groups done a wonderful job of keeping that pool alive for the district, so I just wanted to remind you of that.
Good reminder. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you need a motion?
I need some motions. Yep.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition on the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication costs to the Telegraph Herald.
I second.
It has been moved in second that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of public, of notice of public hearing on the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anybody wanting to come forward and talk about this?
Doug, come on. You may remember that as this project was originally proposed, we were approached by Dash, the Dubuque Area Swimming Hurricanes, about extending that project and that they're willing to do some fundraising to support that. So I think that's why Doug's here tonight.
Well, good evening. My name's Doug Collin, the head coach and executive director for the Dubuque Area Swimming Hurricanes, also known as Dash. First off, I'd like to thank the Dubuque Community School District for bringing this opportunity to the community and to our team and the partnership, and we're really looking forward to moving forward with that. The finances are basically in place, and I have a letter from our banker addressed to Mr. Rangin's just stating that whenever those finances are so needed, they can be advanced. And then also have the agreement between the school district and Dash that we received late this afternoon. We do have, want to have our attorney do one more read-through on it just to make sure, but in principle, we met last Friday and between ourselves and the school district personnel, I think we've got everything ironed out, but it's making sure the i's are dotted and t's are crossed that we do want to make sure, so.
There's the, we have the letter from Premier.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if this would help for the Board since you don't have a copy if I just read, basically. It says, "It's my pleasure," so this is from Premier Bank. "It's my pleasure to inform you and the Board of Dubuque Community School District that the Dubuque Area Swimming Hurricanes have secured the facilities necessary to fund their $1 million commitment to the new pool project to be located at Hempstead High School. Please consider this letter as a commitment to this funding, and know the Premier Bank is ready to make these funds available upon demand." So I think that answers a lot of questions the Board would have.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Just to echo Bill's comments there about this project has been in the works. We're talking about it for six years.
We're in a public hearing right now, so can you hold on just for a second, and we can get back to that when we have the vote? Anybody else within the audience wanting to address?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the authorizing resolution as submitted adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. We'll review the bids.
So on May 3rd, we received bids from two different contractor companies, with Tricon being the apparent low at 8,351,000. We recommend that the Dubuque Community School District award the contract to Tricon Construction Group for the base bid amount and alternate number three, which was for the Spectator Cooling System, for the total contract amount of 8,451,000.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Tricon Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of 8,451,000 dollars.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve and award the bid for the Dubuque Aquatic Facility Addition Project as recommended and further outlined in the authorizing resolution to Tricon Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of 8,451,000 dollars. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to echo a little bit what Bill mentioned about this. This has been kind of in the works. We've been talking about it for six years, and I think it's about time. I think the location is great. I'm so happy that we can partner with a youth group that's involved in swimming, and overall, it's going to benefit the entire community. And so we, as our facilities, we want to make sure also that our facilities, which are public facilities, that they are available whenever possible to be utilized by the public.
Great. Thank you.
I'll start.
Any further discussion?
I guess I would just jump in there really quickly to not gloss over what Bill said. We were told five years ago that to keep this pool running for another five years would cost $1.5 million, and really, Bill and his team with a tiny fraction of that and a lot of ingenuity have been able to keep it running and competitively swimable. And to echo what Jim and you have all said, that we had a very nice pool project on the books, Dash bringing forward $1 million has taken that to the next level. It will be a very fine facility for our students. They'll be able to get in and swim, and we can put more kids in the water at any given time, which means better usage, and certainly, the beneficiaries of the Dash program are the Dubuque Community School District swimming program, so it really is a win-win situation. It is a little bit over what we initially budgeted, but we need to remember that six, five or six years ago when that dollar amount was set, things have changed significantly in the world of construction, so I believe it is very much in line with.
Realistic.
Realistic to the cost.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
I move the Board of Education.
We already have a motion. All those, and we're going to vote.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Dubuque Area Swimming Hurricanes, rather known as Dash.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Dubuque Area Swimming Hurricanes, otherwise known as Dash. Is there any discussion? That was added to our packet later if you want to look at it.
Is that, Doug had mentioned about his lawyers have to look at it. So have our lawyers looked at it?
Ours have. We're comfortable with it, so what's happening here is we're approving it. They'll still need to approve it, but we'll be able to report out that to the Board next Monday at our special meeting, and probably long before that, it'd be an email, but we're approving it. It is approved by our attorneys, and we're pretty comfortable after our meetings that it will be by Dash's attorney as well, but we'll just have to wait to get the final thumbs up on that.
They're giving us a million good reasons to partner with Dash.
True.
You know, and we, I appreciate what Jim said about the facilities always being made available since we passed the one cent tax 16 years ago. That was a blood oath that we gave the community, was that our facilities are your facilities because they are. And it was great Dash came along and said that they wanted them, they suggested some modifications, hence the money that they pitched in, but truly a win-win. So it's, to me, I think it's just a great example of a community project.
I agree. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right, we got that taken care of, and we can go on to school board recognition.
Great. Well, hopefully, we don't wait until this one meeting a year to appreciate the work of the school board, but this is school board appreciation time, and certainly, those of us who work for the district, especially in the central office, understand the many, many hours the school board member puts in in a given month or a year, but for the folks who are watching this at home, just want to reiterate the fact that you have seven board members who are highly committed to the success of all students, and we work hard collaboratively to make sure that we are heading in the right direction as a school district. That doesn't mean everything is always agreed upon 100%, and what you often see at a school board meeting is, I think last week, we had about five hours worth of subcommittee meetings, and so many of these topics are discussed in great detail in those subcommittee meetings, and then they come to the monthly school board meeting for approval. So just wanted to make sure that the folks at home know that the commitment, the time, and most importantly, the belief and focus on kids first is here with the school board, and so we just want to take a few seconds and thank you for the work that you do. There are some thank yous around the room. Some of the school students have produced some cards and some candy and some other things, and then also would like to present each of you with a school board recognition certificate. So Tom, I think you can add this to your pile of 13 or 14, whatever that is by now, so. I have T's first, sorry.
Oh. Thank you.
I can't go out of order, Tom.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, your horses.
Nancy.
All excited.
Thank you. Anderson? I think I have one here for Tom.
I lost yours. Pull yours out for last.
Thank you. Jim.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. I think one of the things that sets the American public education system apart, particularly in Iowa, is the fact that it is overseen by locally elected people who throw their hat in the ring and run for election, never want to miss an opportunity to advocate for local control. I think school systems in Iowa work well when decisions are made by the people locally, closest to the kids, closest to the teachers, closest to the parents. So I'm very, you know, pleased at the system that Iowa has, and this is a great representation of why that system works well, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And we don't get paid. People think we get paid. We don't get paid.
Well, you get Twix.
We get candy bars.
Can we take the glass home with us? Yes, you can.
Yeah, you can. There you go. Okay, I think we have some board salutes. We'll start down. Do you have one, Ms. Bradley?
I do.
Okay.
I am delighted to represent the district's recognition of the communications team from the Dubuque Community School District, which recently received seven awards from the Iowa School Public Relations Association. The awards were for outstanding work in communicating with the district's various stakeholders. What more important than that for us to be recognizing? All seven of the district's entries received awards of excellence, which is higher, the higher of the two annual awards that are given, so quite an honor. It's of note that among those seven, the superintendent's event called Support Public Education Editorial and the LEAP program marketing materials, each received blue and gold award for scoring the highest in their respective categories. Wonderful. So the judges for this are independent judges who, in this year, it was from the Oklahoma School Public Relations Association, very non-biased group of folks, and in general, we just say a congratulations to our communications team for being recognized in the district's efforts to proactively communicate with those whom we serve. So a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment.
That's good. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, I have a board salute. This board salute will go to Lisa Moldenhauer, a Title I reading teacher at Marshall Elementary School, who was honored with a Woman of Achievement Award by the Women's Leadership Network of Dubuque. The award was given at the organization's 11th Annual Awards Banquet. Lisa received an award in the achievement in her field category. The Woman of Achievement Award Ceremony is designated to recognize and honor women who provide significant contributions in their professional or community roles. Congratulations to Lisa and her honor.
So I have two, one for Senior High School and one for Washington Middle School. I was invited to play in a concert this week, and I must say, wow, the teachers and the faculty that invest in our students and just the space of music and art, it's amazing. And just to see what the students were doing, I was just blown out the water. So to the faculty and staff at Senior Washington Middle School, I believe Washington have a concert tomorrow in a few days, so good luck to all the amazing students that are doing that work. So thank you to all the staff again.
Great. Thank you. Do you have one?
Yes, I do. I'd like to give a board salute out to our former school board member, Otto Kruger, who received the Friend of Education Award at last week's annual recognition dinner hosted by the Dubuque Education Association. Otto received the award for the outstanding mentoring he has done with Keith Johnson, a soon-to-be Hempstead graduate who Otto has mentored since kindergarten. At the dinner, Keith spoke of the father figure that Otto has been for him in both good and bad times, and in a few weeks, Keith will graduate and attend Clark University on a full basketball scholarship. Congratulations to Otto on being recognized for this outstanding commitment to students and to Keith for his dedication, persistence, and commitment to his education. We will be proud to watch him enter the next step of educational journey as a Hempstead High School graduate. I'd just like to comment about overall, the program, the teacher recognition thing was a very fine program. There were comments made by people that are not involved in the school district, that were there with their spouses, and they really, they really enjoyed the program and felt it was very worthwhile, very beneficial, the recognition of the Teacher of the Year, et cetera, and she will be recognized, I believe, at a future board meeting. Correct. I'd like to also just have, just to change gears a little bit, I did have a chance to attend the musicals at Roosevelt and Washington. Roosevelt, Cam Park was their musical, and Washington was Annie. And likewise, what you said, Anderson, the arts are alive in our middle schools, our high schools, our elementary schools, and evidence of this in the quality of the productions of the musicals, they were very good.
Great.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It has been moved in second that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time?
Rhonda, you guys want to?
This would be you.
Nope, this is you. Yep, that's you.
It's kind of a formal thing. Kind of a.
I was following you, Deja.
Yeah, no, we have to, we have to go into open forum. So we have tonight Rhonda Ramler here to speak about with some folks who worked hard to get the food pantry up and running at Lincoln Elementary School.
So as the lead nurse for the district, I have the honor to introduce Hillary Gant and Corey Foley, who are RN BSN nursing students from the University of Iowa, and they've been doing a preceptorship with me this spring, and so as part of their community nursing course through the University of Iowa. And earlier this year, I'd received a grant from the Iowa Department of Public Health 5210 program to start the project of the Lincoln Food Pantry. The 5210 is a program initiated by the American Academy of Pediatrics in response to the increasing childhood obesity epidemic. So in collaboration with Kathy Hutton, who is the Director of St. Stephen's Food Bank, they've worked tirelessly on this project, so I'm going to let them talk about their project here. So we have a little PowerPoint, so you should have that there, and then you just have to hit enter. So.
We'd like to start by thanking Rhonda, as well as the Dubuque Community School District for allowing us to participate in this, as well as working with Kathy. It's been a very rewarding experience working at Lincoln Elementary this semester, so we would like to thank all of you. So we'll kind of just go over, Hillary and I initially started by looking at the statistics behind childhood obesity. So childhood obesity, as we all know, is a very serious public health issue, one of the biggest of the 21st century. Dubuque County has an obesity rate of 27%, with 80% not getting adequate fruits and vegetables. When Hillary and I first started, we thought, you know, focusing on childhood obesity, but then it really turned into how does food insecurity, which is a prevalent issue at schools such as Lincoln Elementary, how does that set our children up in the future for obesity? So Lincoln is, as you can see, in 2012, over 15 million households with children under six years old, over 8 million reported food insecurity. So not just here, but worldwide, it is, it is a big public health issue. So an area of Lincoln School is located in a food desert, coupled with low-income residents as well as low access to food, and sometimes not the transportation to get to the grocery store. In Dubuque County, 11,570 individuals are missing over 2 million meals each year, so again, a very prevalent issue in our community. So to kind of go into food insecurity, so food insecurity is a huge problem, obviously for everybody, especially children, because they don't have money and the means to go purchase food for themselves. So children with food insecurity, through our research, we have found are set up for mental health issues, lower school performance, increased anxiety and behavioral issues. Low children, low-income children are obviously at a higher risk for both food insecurity and obesity. Food deprivation leads to overindulgence, which leads to increased risk in obesity, and then stress and anxiety about where their next meal will come from obviously leads to dangerous food relationships. And some of the research that we found, I believe it was the USDA, said that the greatest issue with food insecurity and then leading to obesity is transportation to get to the grocery store. So here is an example. If you had the opportunity to go to Lincoln when we were doing the food pantry, it is open the second Wednesday of every month, keeping the time consistent, and we also will kind of show you in the next couple of slides, we sought feedback from parents as well to kind of tailor what would work best for them. So this is an example of the flyers that went home with students. They were also emailed, as well as you'll see banners throughout the school getting the word out about the food pantry. I think initially, it was just getting it adapted into the culture of Lincoln, and you'll see our results improved quite a bit over the last several months. So this, so we.
So, this, so we, obviously as part of the project and part of our school requirements, had to track data to see, you know, what impact are we having on this project? So, we tracked how many families we served and then how many individuals were in each family to have a better idea of how many folks we were actually reaching. So, our February results represented our inaugural, kind of our first food pantry event that we held, which correlated with conferences, so over three days. And I think initially we were a little, we were kind of like, oh, gosh, you know, is this going to get off the ground? Is this going to be utilized? But we really found, once this event becomes ingrained in the culture, the utilization increased exponentially.
And so, these are the results from March, April, and May. And as you can see, in March, we served 13 families and 63 individuals. From March to April, our increase was 51 families and 272 individuals. And then in May, 41 families and 190 individuals. And there's just nothing to explain the look on the children's faces. They are just, this picture says it perfectly, the joy they have in their face, the excitement that they have over the fresh produce that we can provide for them, such as the blueberries Kathy and I were just talking about, they were just, they are just overjoyed on the days that we have food giveaways.
Is the May number partially because May's not over yet? I mean, are you on track to...
Yeah, so part of it also represents a little bit of trial and error on our part. So, we really, we got together every month and we're like, what worked, what didn't work, and how do we make this? And part also of our component of this was having surveys to see what benefited the families, what time works better for them. So, April was our first month that we were able to be outside, which we found was a huge bonus in utilization. April, we also allowed children, if they wanted to, to carry bags of food home. We found that that ended up resulting in some food being ditched, or whether they dropped it, or, you know, whatever, long walks home, we all understand how it goes. So, then in May, we were more strict, this last pantry that we held, we said, you know, a parent has to be along, so that you have transport, or somebody responsible to get this food home.
And we do have one more in May. We have a same...
That's part of it.
Yes. So, kind of tie into this, so our next pantry is going to be on the 23rd. We are hoping to maintain the pantry throughout, obviously, the school year into the next school year. We kind of have, you know, discussed the potential of doing some summer events, kind of where this goes from here. So, our hope is that through the research that we've done and presentations tonight, obviously, that we'll be able to expand this project into other Title I schools, just seeing the benefit that it's had for the families that we've served. And then, obviously, to continue working with Kathy and the St. Stevens Food Bank. They've been remarkable, so.
Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate working with the school board, and especially with Rhonda and the gals, because it's been, it's been a great experience with everything. Rhonda has just been enormous, great, at helping me get this started. It was kind of a dream of mine several years ago to get it started, and then through our Wellness Coalition and the 5210, we got it started. And now I've actually secured some grant money to start another one in one of our schools this fall and to continue the Lincoln one. So, thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a great project, and I know the need that's downtown schools on a weekly basis. I do volunteer work at a church that serves the meals, and I see the kids that come in, and I've seen them, I've heard them talk about how they can go to Lincoln. So, I think it'll be good when it can expand to the other downtown school areas for them to do this. Did you say it's twice a month? Once a month?
Once a month. We're doing an extra one this month, just because we have plenty of the money left for this year. But we would like to go twice a month, because as we see, the need is there.
Okay.
Are we partnering with the community? The Dubuque Main Street has a Dubuque Food Double Up Program to make sure parents that are in need, or families that are in need, can have access to fruits and vegetables?
Yeah, that's the Double Up books.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's mainly at the farmer's market with the Snaps program, and then they take $10 in from that, and then they get another $10. So, they're getting $20 that they can spend.
But are you educating them when they're coming to the school food bank to be able to tell them? Because I think there's a big disconnect that I have found out, that we don't, they're not going to the farmer's market. So, I look at it as, the school is a place to educate for the summer program, because it ends at the school, but to say, here's where you can go for the summer month.
And that's great partnership. I mean, that would be something we could do, we could be getting flyers out to the families as they come to the pantry to let them know about that. You know, that's where we really want to get more partnership with the community.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's not just the school district, but it's the whole community, like Anderson always points out.
Well, and we've had one organization already step up and give Kathy quite an amount of money to help keep this going. So, as other, hopefully, as other organizations and companies and stuff in the Dubuque area catch on to this, that we can get more of their involvement as well.
And we've had a local donations too, after they read the story in the paper. Then we've had small donations, and they want it to go to this, so it's designated for that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
The amount of poverty that is in our community and is manifest in our children, and the number of children who are hungry in our schools, is a frightening thing to me. To say thank you to each and all of you is certainly an important thing. Kathy, you're here, and you represent St. Stevens and the work that goes with Lincoln, but it's an opportunity also to say thank you for the many ways in which St. Stevens Food Bank, under your leadership, provides help to our children and their families through this program, but also in other ways as well. And it's powerfully important and good work you do, and just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you.
It's very exciting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make the difference, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? All right. I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to have anything removed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, that takes us to quite a bit of motions here for the facilities. There you go.
Yeah, we had our Facility Support Services Committee last Monday. We met at Senior High School in the library, and then we went on a tour of the building for approximately 20 minutes to a half an hour, somewhere in that range. The architect showed us around, and the project is nearing completion. It will be complete sometime before school starts next fall, I believe. So, that was, so the items on the agenda of our Facility Support Services meeting, the first one was, and I'm just making the motions kind of, and we, again, I'm going to repeat myself, I've said this before, everybody has said it, we discuss these things at the committee level, and sometimes it seems like we gloss over them here at the board meeting, but we have been discussing these projects prior to this meeting. So, the first motion is I move that the Board of Education approve the donation to Marshall School of a Gaga ball pit in the amount of $926.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation to Marshall School of a Gaga ball pit in the amount of $926. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add that the materials are going to be donated, and our Buildings and Grounds crew is going to be in charge of supervising the completion of the project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation to Sageville School of a memorial bench and tree for a student who passed away in August of 2017 in the amount of $1,300.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation to Sageville School of a memorial bench and tree for a student who passed away in August of 2017 in the amount of $1,300. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to add that the parents and students were all involved in the fundraising for this project.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2018-2019 school year. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented. Are we going to have, or is it just within our package?
It's in your, I mean, we talked, you certainly can have Phil talk about it.
No, that's okay. I just didn't, I want to make sure. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretarial employees as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretarial employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of the Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to indicate that these basic agreements are in line with our financial support we're receiving from the state, and it was at the minimal 1% basically this year. And so, unless we have more influence, more appropriations from our state government, our employees are somewhat restricted in terms of their increases in pay. That's it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 15 to Conlon Construction on the Senior High renovation project in the increased amount of $28,214.03.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 15 to Conlon Construction on the Senior High School renovation project in the increased amount of $28,214.03. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize IIWPC to proceed into the construction development phase for the Alta Vista Campus Project.
Second. It has been moved and seconded...
Point of information, do we mean construction document phase, not development, not construction development?
Oh, I didn't catch that either.
Normally, I wouldn't say that, but that changes the meaning of the motion. So, friendly amendment, Jim, you okay with that?
You, um, perfect.
Thanks.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize IIWPC to proceed into the construction document phase for the Alta Vista Campus Project. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Clower Development Corporation, doing business as Clower Construction Company, for the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Replacement Project.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the executed construction contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance with Clower Development Corporation, doing business as Clower Construction Company, for the Washington Middle School Kitchen Exhaust Replacement Project. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I think that's it for facilities.
That's it for facilities.
All right, thank you very much. We can move on to Ed Programs, Policy, and Strategy. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you. The, we began with hearing an appeal from parents for a denial of an open enrollment request for their child to attend Roosevelt. After hearing the parents and their situation, the denial was upheld. But I think it's important for people to know that the appeal process is available when denials are received. Then, as, since we are the Educational Programs Committee, we were fortunate to hear from four different groups of people about educational programs for our information, not for action. But as Superintendent Rheingan said, a lot of, a lot of the work of the board happens in these committee meetings. And so, we were very pleased to receive information first from the Two by Two Character Education Program. Kristin Woodward-Vossen, who is the founder and executive director of Two by Two, and former elementary principal Nan Welsh, who is now working with Kristin in the educational programming part of Two by Two, brought us information not only about the ongoing nature of the character education programs in our second and fourth grades, which is quite exemplary, and made available to us without cost, which is pretty extraordinary. This is a national program, receiving many accolades for the quality of the programming and the impact it has on children from a character point of view. And because Kristin and her staff are local, and because she has, was a former teacher in our district and recognizes our children's need for this kind of program, she makes it available to us at no cost, which certainly this is an opportunity to once again say thank you to the Two by Two program, especially to Kristin for that happening. In addition, they brought us information about the new aspects of the program that have been developed. Very important that they've gone into two additional areas of programming beyond second and fourth graders, which has been in place. Now, they have a family toolkit that's been developed for parent education, and that brings it into the after-school program arena, where so many of our children attend after-school programming. And the family toolkit happens, is available both for home programming and for the after-school programs. So, we're very excited and very grateful. This new program is going to be available to the Dream Centers, St. Mark's, Boys and Girls Club, and our district's after-school programming for our children. So, very exciting, and we appreciated their coming and giving us an update. Secondly, we heard from three of our teachers, two elementary tech coaches, and one primary teacher about the Seesaw software platform that's being used. Many of our, as we know, we have a new standards-based elementary progress report, a report card in motion at the pilot level, but used throughout all of our elementary schools in some classrooms on a pilot basis. Much of what we've seen is made even more accomplishable with that through the help of the Seesaw platform. And so, we heard from Courtney Whiterd and Mandy Raul and Michaela Koch about their work with Seesaw, how it helps them communicate with parents about the children's progress, gives a wonderful two-way communication for parents and teachers to keep connected about the day-to-day work of the children in the classroom, to have conversations back and forth through the Seesaw program. It also helps very much to manage the standards-based world of accomplishing the many, many instructional standards that are before each of our teachers. So, that was a wonderful demonstration, and we're grateful that we have so many teachers who are not only willing, but want to use technology to help them meet the needs of their students. So, we appreciated the Seesaw demonstration.
Just an update on that, the question was asked at the committee about the availability, was it by building, by teacher? So, it will be made available for all teachers next year.
Wonderful.
There's the more in-depth paid version, the little less in-depth free version, so teachers will be allowed to choose which version. If they're going to utilize the aspects of the paid version, we'll be happy to pay for that. If they're not, then we'll stick with the more basic free version, though we believe over time they'll all migrate to the paid version, and that's a good thing. Though we believe over time, they'll all migrate to the paid version, and that's a good thing.
Well, that's wonderful to know. Thank you. The paid version, as I understood, brings the standards into the conversation, which is a worthy, certainly, thing as, as we move towards more of a standards-based life. The third thing was information we received about the ninth grade Anytime, Anywhere Learning, which is the name, the community doesn't know, that's the name given to the one-to-one correspondence between ninth grade students and their, them each having a device, a tablet, that helps more and more to be accomplished instructionally with teaching and learning because of the one-to-one programming at the ninth grade. Happy to hear, in the grand scheme of how are we continuing to grow our technological assistance for teaching and learning, that next year, we'll add another year, so that both ninth graders and 10th graders, the following year, ninth, 10th, and 11th, and so on, until 9, 10, 11, and 12 grades have the Anytime, Anywhere Learning. So we appreciated David Moller and Barb Brotesis bringing us information, excuse me, about the laptops and about how they're being used in the instructional setting to help our students learn, and help our teachers have the tools that help them differentiate instruction for our students. So we very much appreciated that. The last thing was the New Teacher Center, which has been the basis for our whole district New Teacher Mentoring and Induction Program. We've been provided the support and assistance of the New Teacher Center out of the University of California, Santa Cruz. Developed an award-winning program. We're happy for that ongoing association with them. And so the board, tonight, in the consent agenda, approved the contract which allows us to go forward and continue, and expand, actually, our work with them in helping not only our mentors of our new teachers, but also our instructional coaches, to have the skills and tools and protocols for them to keep growing our professional staff. Very excited about that. And in addition, the community may be interested in knowing that we are developing our own trainers for that program. So we're nearing a point at which we'll no longer need to purchase services from the University of California, Santa Cruz, and the Teacher Center, and we'll be able to have our own training team. So very pleased about that. In the consent agenda tonight, then lastly, we approved the nine policies that came before the committee for consideration of review and revision. Some updates were made, and we approved those tonight. I just lift up one of them, Policy 5703, for just a mention tonight. That's the Threat Assessment Protocol. And so the community is aware that, as we continue to look for more and more ways to have our schools and our classrooms and our staff and our children safe in a world that too often seems to threaten safety and security, the district has advanced now a Threat Assessment Protocol, which gives a template, if you will, for how, once received a threat from a student to another student, to a group of students, to a teacher or other staff member, will be followed up with all degree of precision and seriousness, so that we can not only prevent a wrongdoing, but help the child who's making the threat. That student needs our help as well. And so we're pleased to, tonight, have approved that. So that's it, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to new business?
Move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to Students #817653, #817499, and #819405 at this time.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to Students 817653, #817499, and #819405 at this time. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Board member or administrative issues? Any board members have anything?
I just remember tomorrow, we're going on a field work, we're going to do some field work tomorrow.
Yep, we're going to Cedar Rapids.
We're going to Cedar Rapids. And then Monday, we have our strategic plan update, and that, we have an early session at 4:30, am I correct?
Correct, so there's a closed session to talk about non-bargaining, the contract. I would also ask the board to potentially consider starting the regular, the strategic plan meeting at 5:00 versus 5:30. The Hempstead Senior Awards banquet is at 7:00. I have a graduate this year who is attending that, and I would like to be done by 7:00.
It's what happens when you're the big wig, you can call that.
The other thing I wanted to also add was that recognition bank that was so nice is that we recognized our retired teachers and administrators. And it's, like, it's always bittersweet to lose all that valuable expertise and experience. At the same token, we wish them well on their way to their new...
Just as important, the friend, what was it?
Friends of Education.
Friends of Education, what was the name of, the team, the team award?
We should have them stand up.
Was given to Phil and Stan, which is really good to recognize. Because what was interesting was, after that, I heard, or even maybe it was before that, they were recognized for, the teachers' union was very happy that they just kept things status quo. We want to be a district where people want to work. And so we're not going to go in and take a look at, even though it's not under collective bargaining, we're not coming in and changing things just because you can. We're doing things because it's what's right for teachers. And so they were recognized with that, which was really good to hear, because I was at a meeting with other districts, UEN districts, last week, and the conversations that are going on around board tables, how they are just slashing things, I'm just shocked. I'm like, we're already hitting into a teacher shortage. To hear that districts are doing what they're doing because they can, without taking a look at what it means for the teachers and staff, I think is, says a lot for Phil and for Stan to come to us as a board to say, hey, this is what's right for teachers. And without question, we agree with that. So, because we are coming onto a time where it's harder and harder to get teachers into the profession. And if they're going to go into the profession, why not come and work at the Dubuque Community School District? Because it's an awesome place to work.
We can't, we can't have great schools without great teachers.
That's right, that's right.
If they want to send us their great ones, we'll take them.
That's right, and we've got great leaders. So that says a lot for Stan and Phil to be able to get that recognition, I think is absolutely amazing.
What time is the non-exempt session?
4:30.
So it's still at 4:30?
If they think a half an hour will be long enough. It is just, it's the conversation around the non-bargaining. We have 40-ish, no more than that, employees. And so we will present a package that's very similar to the ones you've already seen tonight.
We'll start that at 5:00, then 4:30, and then 5:00.
Back to Stan and Phil's award, they did not have to share the plaque or cut it in half.
Also to add a congratulations once again to Ed Glazer, who was last year's team award locally, therefore went on to competition at the ICA State level for the state team award and was selected.
First ever.
No, Leslie Stevens was the first to get the one, I believe, can I, is that right?
Everyone's shaking their head, yep.
All right, anything else? We are adjourned.